All right, well, call order, regular meeting of the Chisholm City Council for October 28, 2020. Good evening, everyone. Start out with roll call. Margaret?
Councilor Lance.
Here.
Councilor Fulton, absent. Councilor Vaki?
Here.
Councilor Varda, absent. Councilor Campbell?
Here.
Mayor Champa?
Here. Adopt the agenda. I believe everything is correct on the agenda. Bill, is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, I have not received any changes.
Okay, motion to adopt the agenda, council.
I'll make that motion to adopt the agenda. This is Councilor Campbell.
Okay, is there a second for that?
Support. Councilor Lance.
Lance? Any discussion? Okay, Margaret?
Councilor Lance.
Aye.
Councilor Fulton, absent. Councilor Vaki?
Aye.
Councilor Varda, absent. Councilor Campbell?
Aye.
And Mayor Champa?
Aye. Okay, agenda is adopted. Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance, tutified with the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, council, you're probably wondering why we have all the folks from Redhead and Discovery Center and IROC on with us tonight. Couple of weeks ago, I asked Bill if we could invite all of them back to one of our council meetings, if we can find a one that we don't have a 23-page agenda and just kind of get a year in review and talk a little bit about where we're headed, things we can do to work better together and just kind of shoot the breeze for 15, 20 minutes before a meeting starts. I see we have Mr. Plummer on from Iron Range Resources. I see we had Donna Johnson and Jordan Metz on, and I seen Benji Neff and Patrick Cassingham. I don't know, any one of you, go ahead, give us a little, give us a little rundown and share with us anything you can to get us up to speed on everything we got going on out there and everything you're helping us with.
Members of the council, maybe I could start. That's all right.
Yeah.
I think I'll limit my initial comments to just informing the council where we're at today and allow, you know, any operational maintenance success stories to be told by Minnesota Discovery Center, Donna and Jordan and Benji, and I see Pete's on, so I'll just give you an update on, on the construction and the development of the trails. So first of all, you know, thank you, city of Chisholm, Minnesota Discovery Center, IROC, St. Louis County, who's been, you know, one of our other really big partners on this project. It's a unique landscape there, and a lot of people have fallen in love with it due to the landscape, the high-quality trails that have been built, and, you know, it's very unique to have the infrastructure that we have at that trailhead at, you know, with Minnesota Discovery Center and the St. Louis County Fairgrounds right at the front step of, you know, that mine pit. Usually it's the other way around. You build a mountain bike park and it's out in the middle of nowhere, and there's no infrastructure, so that it's just, it's just huge. So, as you know, the city of Chisholm was awarded a $1.777 million No Match Grant back in 2018, and, you know, this project started long before that, but even at that point, there was still a lot of work to do. Getting authorization from several landowners, leases, insurance, environmental, you know, we did an EAW. There was a lot of work to do. I won't go into any of that detail. But the IRRR has essentially asked or acted as the developer for the trails. So the money flowed from us. We hired all the consultants and contractors and so forth, and we've pretty much, over the last two years, gone through that $1.77 million. Not all, not quite all of it, but most of it, at least all of it that we're going to use for constructing trails. So in 2019, 15 miles of trail was built, and I think Bill sent out an email with our map showing, you know, those first 15 miles. At one point, we had 11 crews on the property to build those first 15 miles in about half of the summer and part of the fall, so it was pretty amazing. Those trails, as you know, officially opened on June 12, which was the soft opening. And, you know, again, I'm not going to talk about the success of this season. I'll let Donna and Jordan and other folks talk about that, but I'll just say it's been pretty successful. So then, this year, we built an additional eight miles of trail, including a trail that goes all the way around the east side of the pit. So those maps that Bill sent out, and you'll notice that it, you know, those, those first trails, they're all pretty much on the west side of that pit. Now with this new trail, it goes all the way to the end, so it's expanded that map you're looking at immensely. And then, in addition to that eight miles of trail, there's two little loops on the south side, the south and the east side of the map. Those trails are not open yet. We still have not installed the wayfinding signs and intersection signs for those trails, so we will be working on that. Our IROC will be working on that, installing the wayfinding and those bigger signs, the intersection signs, first thing in the spring, and then however you want, then after those signs are up, to officially open those eight miles next spring in 2021. So that, that's kind of where we're at. I think there's a lot of potential yet at Redhead. There's a lot of things yet to do. As you know, there's an effort, ongoing effort for private funding and a film being, or two actually being made for that, for private funding. I think there's also the potential for some public grants for additional development at Redhead that would likely include additional trails out in the field. There's 10 miles that, that are, that are mapped and flagged already by Kay Lynn, who is our designer and construction manager. There's been talk about a pump track. The trailhead could be, you know, redone. So those are kind of the major things that I see potentially being developed in the near future if money can be raised to do so. At the IRRR, we also have a regional trails grant program, and any money you raise could potentially be matched through that program as well. And I'm the administrator for that program. So I think that, you know, there's, there's unbelievable potential there. I know the Minnesota Discovery Center and Donna and Jordan have been doing some comprehensive planning with the SC Group, and a lot of that has to do with their grounds, infrastructure, but also Redhead. And I, you know, not all of those plans have been laid out yet, so there's some good planning going on to help prioritize, you know, what needs to be done first and so forth. But that's, that's really all of my prepared remarks, if there's any questions.
Jim, thank you for all that, and thank you for all the work you're doing out there. Yeah, a lot of that I think the council is aware of, and I think we got to keep trudging forward. I think that thing has a lot of potential, and I'm hearing nothing but good. I'm hearing nothing but good about it, so.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question, if I could.
Go ahead, Trace.
Okay, um, yeah, thanks for, for all that. I really support the trail, and I think it's a great addition to the area, for sure. I do have a question regarding, an email that I got today from Bill Manning regarding signs for trail closure. I saw an email with a sign that says the trail is closed on Wednesdays from dawn to 1:00 p.m. for blasting. Problem is, is Hibbing Taconite doesn't always blast on Wednesdays. And what if we have people coming out of the area, you know, to ride the trail, and it's not on a Wednesday, it's on a Thursday, and they decide they're going to blast on Thursday? And how are we going to make sure that nobody is on that trail? I mean, we're not going to have police out there to ensure that there's nobody on all those, all those trails. I mean, is there a gate or something that can be gated off up at the trailhead or installed so that we can actually close that trail after in that time? That's my concern. I'm totally for this. I mean, I love the trail. It's great.
That's a great question, Tracy. Jordan Metz here from the Discovery Center. So we did put together a couple of trail signs here. I don't know if the folks, we set this around to be included in the agenda. They are just rough drafts. I do apologize that we were told at first the blasting would be done on Wednesday. So we are working with Stephanie in the city of Chisholm and the Hibbing Taconite, who will be doing the blasting, and will be working to finalize language on that sign. The initial one, I had put Wednesdays on there because that's when I told the blast days was, but actually, we're going to take the, there'll be no specific verbiage on the sign for a day. It'll just be, you know, danger, mind blasting, and then we can hang it up on the according day. And last week, I met through email some of the folks who put out the distribution list to notify particular organizations and communities about the blasting schedule. I shared that with Stephanie and had shared some emails from our organization, IROC, and the city of Chisholm to be included on that distribution list, so we can know what the blasting schedule is. But a little update on that, I did speak with them, and the word is, is that they won't actually be mining on this site or need to shut down the highway side for at least another year. So we have time to kind of figure out a process and a protocol. You know, once we get these signs printed, how we'll kind of do our best to make sure folks aren't on the trail. Of course, like you said, it's next to impossible for us to guarantee that somebody's not on the trail. All we can do is have protocols in place and put up our sign and lock our gate, and from there, it's my understanding that we've done our job. But to just very clearly answer your question, Tracy, we will be switching the verbiage on that sign. We'll be in communication with the city of Chisholm to get the okay on that, and it will likely not be specific to a day, so we don't have the problems that you brought up in, in your concerns.
Okay, so, so there is a gate though, or something that, to close that trailhead off?
Right now, it's just a small opening about six feet in length. We do have the ability to have, right now, we have a Trail Closed Grant banner stretched across that people can't directly walk through, but we are looking at options like, you know, a gate or something more, more of a physical barrier that we can place down, and whether that's, you know, it could just be, you know, like those construction orange, you know, that the city puts out when they close down streets for parades and stuff. We could do something like that and then hang the sign up, and we'll work through the city to make sure everyone's comfortable and on the same page with that protocol.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Jason.
No problem.
Jason, or Jordan and Donna, might as well just go right into you guys.
Sorry about that, Jordan. Sorry about that.
I'm sure he's never been called Jason before.
All right, I could just show some highlights of what we've seen this year and kind of the numbers we've seen. We kind of, we tried to estimate the number of riderships here at the trail, just the averages we see every day and about how many riders per vehicle, but obviously, this year, we didn't have any trail counters, but we're working on a grant to get a physical trail counter right at that gate. So next summer, we can have real accurate numbers, so we're hoping to have that in place by the grand opening. But I think we estimated that this summer, we've seen close to 18,000 to 20,000 riders. That might be a little high just because we're going on daily averages and how often the parking lot refreshes, but when we did the math with those numbers, we got close to that 20,000 mark, which I feel could be pretty accurate. And then with our Redhead social media, we've shared the Facebook page with Stephanie. She has access to that. But with the analytics that we've gotten off of that, we've reached over 140,000 people. We've had over 2,200 likes with over 500 social media posts that Jordan has put together. And that's between Facebook stories and Instagram. The interesting number in the analytics is we reached 52% women and 48% men, which I find that interesting when mountain biking is usually dominated more by male audience. So I think, I think that's pretty cool. And through the process, we have built a professional library of over hundreds of photographs and many hours of professional videography, and then we've had a lot of strong media presence. We've been on WDSC, WDIO. Care 11 came up from the cities, just a ton of media presence that we didn't even ask for. They, they came on their own, so that's cool. From MDC's perspective, we figured we've put in about $65,000 in our own salaries and hours towards the Redhead project, and that, about $8,000 in marketing, about $10,000 in signage, and we're working at getting a, putting $45,000 into a shuttle service and trailer that will connect downtown to Redhead and provide service to the Glen Side. We're hoping to have that ready by next spring, and then we're putting in about $155,000 over this winter into trailhead amenities, and so that when we have the grand opening, we'll have more infrastructure, signage, and archway going down into the park. So when people pull into the Discovery Center parking lot, it's easier to find. The wayfinding to get to the trailhead will be more noticeable. We'll have changing stations, bathrooms, bike stations, all the amenities people would look for up closer to the trailhead. So that infrastructure will look much better next summer. And then whatever we're putting up there, that $155,000 investment, we're looking at making that mobile so that with all of our other funding efforts, if we get to a point where we could put something more permanent, more elaborate, everything can be repurposed into other parts of the trail system. It won't be a waste of money in the meantime, but we know it's going to take us a couple of years to raise those funds, so we want to make sure we have something ready to go for the grand opening. About 15%, I think we've seen about a 15% increase in MDC visitors due to Redhead, and probably 25% increase of those eating at the rustic pig directly related to Redhead. And then this summer, we've increased our gift shop sales about $10,000 just in Redhead bike accessories and merchandise. So I just think, once we sat down and looked at the numbers, I think, just bringing to the point that MDC has put in about 283,000 by the time next spring comes into growing Redhead, and that's because we see the value, we know the impact it will have on our community, and it's just, it's really awesome. Over this winter, we're going to be really focusing on planning that grand opening event with the city of Chisholm and the chambers and all of the parties involved. And then we're working on the Old Saw Media project that the city of Chisholm graciously helped fund. We'll be ready to kick off that campaign. We're also building over this winter a food truck for right at the trailhead to offer more food services to those riders, and then we're meeting and designing what that trailhead will look like, so we're ready to install as soon as the ground allows, probably towards the end of May, and then working on a bigger directional signage plan. And then we're also working with all the other mountain bike destinations on a Ride the Range initiative to really draw people to northern Minnesota between Kuna, Tioga, Giant's Ridge, and Redhead, so that's really exciting to help get that marketing and that word out there. And then, obviously, we've been working on a lot of other funding opportunities and other bigger grants we can go for, and we're getting, getting Redhead designated as an official trail system for the state of Minnesota. So, and I've also really appreciated, we've been meeting monthly now with Stephanie Scraba. She's a great addition and a great connector with us in the city, so appreciate that. I think that's in a nutshell. Is there any other questions for us?
Donna, Mayor Champa? I don't, I don't think you missed anything.
Please, no.
Very informative. Great numbers. It's, it's good to hear. Good to hear. How's, how's Jordan's movie coming?
Good. Thanks for asking, Mayor. The movie went great. I just want to say, oh, what's it was? Worked with the city, with all the stakeholders, the volunteers, the people who came out of the woodwork to really make this production happen last minute. It was a very intense five-day shoot, a 14 to 18-hour day, so I can't thank everybody involved enough for the support received in funding for the city. We put together one heck of a production that I think we're all going to be proud of, and I just want to say, you know, for, as what a logistic nightmare it could have been to try and, you know, have, bring in a bunch of first-timer videographers and mountain bikers into a pit they've never been and try and figure out how we can shoot a documentary. It just went so perfect. I'm just really happy. So in a real quick nutshell, we wrapped up production. We are finished shooting. We shot in, I believe, nine different locations, including Kuna, Tioga, and the city of Chisholm. We had over 60 moving parts, different characters in the, in the production, so we got a lot of value from that, a lot of diversity represented in this film. And what we're going to end up creating as a result of all this is a beautiful, spectacular 10-minute documentary telling the story of Redhead, telling the grit that went into this to produce such a world-class product that it now is, you know, owned by the city of Chisholm. So we'll do a 10-minute documentary, a two- to three-minute crowdfunding campaign video, and that video will follow two professional actors, I shouldn't say professional actors, two actors that we brought in to, you know, kind of create a video around, and it's basically a video that will follow their experience coming up north, riding Redhead, visiting Chisholm, and it will show all the fun things to do, and we'll use that as our main crowdfunding video. Alongside that, we'll also get 10 really awesome 10- to 30-second teasers that we'll use on social media, and we'll get an additional 150 to 200 very high-quality photographs. So that's in addition to the, you know, dozens and dozens of photographs that we've been, you know, archiving on behalf of Redhead that we will share with the city of Chisholm that is available to our, our partner over at IROC and, and future stakeholders and partners as we reach out. Overall, the production went very well. I hope to see a final first cut sometime before the end of this year, and I will definitely be sitting down with Stephanie and some folks from the city of Chisholm to kind of go over that, but get excited. It's going to be really great, and some of the best material ever put out for mountain biking from Minnesota, so something we can all be proud of.
Perfect. Council, anything for Jordan or Donna before we move on to Ben and Pat?
Hey, great job. Well, glad, I'm glad. No, great job, everybody. You know, Jim, Pat, you know, Donna, Jordan, Benji, you guys have done great. I've not had one bad thing about the trail. Everyone I know that has come up just loves it, and I see Peter's on here too, so I'll thank you very much for everything you guys have done. You know, it is, it's going to be great for the community, so I appreciate it. Thank you for all your hard work.
Jordan, Donna, thank you for all you've done. Of course, I was lucky enough to, to be part of that film and see, meet with the, the Old Saw Media guys and chat with them, and it was a great experience for me. You know, being involved and, and holding the spot until Stephanie came around was, was a truly an experience for me. If, if you've not had Jordan walk you down there and show you some things that you definitely need to, because it is, it's, it's an amazing thing, and I'm grateful that we formed this partnership because it's going to be so good moving forward, partnering with you guys, with IROC and the IRRR as well. So I'm just grateful. As you all know, I was, this was a big deal to me, so I'm grateful that everything worked out, and we, we did what we accomplished, so thank you.
Just to play one thing off, and to say thank you to Travis for borrowing his four-wheeler, and I know there was some technical difficulties with it, so hats off to Travis. That was a huge part of the production success, having that motor transportation, and so thank you.
All right. We'll move on to the three gentlemen, Pete and Benji and Patrick, the guys that have to fix the trail when it washes down the side of the mountain. How are you folks tonight?
Good.
All Jersey up there.
Can, can you hear me okay, Mr. Mayor? My connection wasn't super good earlier.
Yeah, I can hear you good. I can, anyway.
Well, I'll start out with a little description of IROC, and then Benji or Pat, feel free to chime in. First of all, thanks again, you know, to the city of Chisholm. Thank you to IRRR. Thank you to Minnesota Discovery Center. I mean, everybody's contribution to this project so far has just been so deeply appreciated, and the success in the numbers that Donna put forward is really a success I think we can all be proud of jointly. As far as IROC's activities on the site for the year, we had two major activities and then a series of ongoing activities. So at the beginning of the season, a weekend before the official trail opening, we conducted a training session, and that was a training session for our volunteers who were going out to do trail maintenance and repair to get them familiar with what, you know, their duties are and how to perform them, introduce them to, you know, how we're trying to track our, our work, that sort of thing, and then we finished up with a lunch. And at that lunch, we were able to get the city of Chisholm emergency responders out, and so it was a chance for us to mix between, you know, the trail users and the responders, and they had a training event then in the afternoon, which I understand was very successful. So really appreciated that event to kind of kick off the season. Then throughout the year, Pat was the one who coordinated the activities of our volunteer maintenance crews. So every two weeks, a new volunteer crew would come on with the responsibility of inspecting the trail and doing any maintenance activities that were required during that period. So over the course of the summer, we, you know, not all of our tracking has been you know, not all of our tracking um has been up to date yet. That's one of the things that we hope to to improve on for next year with uh some of our volunteer training. But but the hours that were tracked uh were about six hundred volunteer hours over the course of the summer, and it's probably in reality doubled that. Um so we had a lot of people boots on the ground, you know, keeping the trail operational uh with with Pat's direction and Pat's leadership. Uh and then we finished off with a uh kind of an all hand event toward the end of September. And that was directed toward the new trail system that that uh Jim talked about, the new eight miles. Uh after we had had the big storm event in the summer, there because those trails hadn't been packed in and ridden in like some of the other trails in the system. We did have a few washouts in those areas that were repaired uh by our volunteer crews during that event. Um so overall, again, I I think it's just been a huge success. Uh we are uh intending to continue our efforts next year and um we'll we'll keep up uh the work as as uh needed for the maintenance efforts. And then and then part of uh what I rock has also been participating in is uh some of the photography and videography that was talked about so that we have uh really high quality content to put out on, you know, webpages, social media, things like that, that attract people to our region as well, because they sometimes uh look at the I rock websites and things for doing that. Um and we've been working with uh partners and others to to raise some funds for the clubs so that as we're moving forward uh with our maintenance tasks, you know, we can buy gas and reward our volunteers and buy lunches and things like that. So uh we're we're working on developing kind of a a small revenue stream, you know, we're a nonprofit, but but enough money to to keep us uh able to maintain the trails. But that's all I've got. Anything you want to add, uh Benji or Pat?
Uh no, I think you covered it pretty well, Pete. But again, just on behalf of I rock, uh thank you to to our partners with the city and with the discovery center. Um I do think we really have a great uh partnership. Uh you know, I don't think any one of these entities could could have pulled this project off or continued to operate this project by themselves. So I I think it's, I think it's a good team and we're very fortunate. Um and uh yeah, we're we're just thankful to be a part of it and have great trails to ride in your backyard.
Thank you. Uh just a question for uh probably Pete, Benji and Patrick more than anything, but does this um park have the potential of holding some type of competition someday? Do they have them at these parks or um where you where you draw some people in from around the country and have a really neat event someday? Thoughts on that?
Absolutely. Um. Our our initial thought right out of the gate here and uh Gary Shookquist, who I I understand you you've got a relationship with has a lot more of a you know, he he could really enlighten you on these topics, but uh the the low hanging fruit uh for attracting ridership to the area for events would be a couple. Uh one is uh they have the Minnesota Series Mountain Bike Event, which attracts, you know, teams of all ages to different venues around the state. And um, you know, they hold uh events every other weekend or every weekend during their race season. That seemed like the logical place to start because that group comes up with uh all of the timing equipment and things like that that they need. It would be a really easy uh place for us to start and and kind of work the kinks out of hosting an event. Um and one nice thing about that is that they return some of that money to the hosting uh bike club that suppo- that sponsors it. So it would be helpful, you know, to to keep us afloat as we're maintaining the trails. Uh then the second and and larger opportunity would be uh if if we could get on the circuit for the Minnesota High School Series. Uh if if Gary hasn't talked to you about it already, uh he's really interested in uh finding a volunteer to start a a high school league team from the Central Iron Range that could participate in this. Uh and and when they they come to town, uh it is thousands of people uh for a whole weekend. And um I I think Gary said that the economic impact to a small community of hosting that race is is like five hundred thousand dollars. So it's really amazing if we could get on that schedule. Those are the first two that would be kind of targeted. Uh so far, it's just been talk and and of course, with COVID, not all of those race events were held as expected this year anyway. So that would be something to think about for twenty twenty one and future years. And then uh beyond that, you know, there there could be even bigger races if these initial uh entries into the the race hosting uh are successful.
Beautiful. That's uh good, that's good news.
Mayor, this is Jim. Would you recognize Stephanie? Because I think she's got some uh news on an uh funding application that she is going to be submitting in a couple of days that ties right in with uh this topic.
All right, yeah. Good evening, Stephanie.
Hi, Mr. Mayor. Um yes, I've been working with Jim Johnson on creating a letter of intent for a Min doc grant for transportation alternatives. What the what the letter of intent, if we're able to submit the full grant application would be is a pedestrian bicycle bridge that would connect um the land at Minnesota Discovery Center over kind of by the McDonald's area there to be able to connect those two. So this would allow the the participants of both the Minnesota Discovery Center and the Redhead Mountain Bike Park to have an ease to get into the city of Chisholm and be able to use the amenities here.
Thank you. That's good news too. Everybody's working in the right direction.
Yeah. Hey, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Travis.
All right, uh so um I know Pat and I have talked a little bit about this, but I figured it might be a good spot to to mention it too, is the potential for um fat tire bike biking in the winter um on those trails. And I know Pat's looking at getting a groomer for the trail. So um you know, I'll uh have more information on that when the next time we meet for budgeting purposes, but uh it, you know, this is a future of this is a year round deal here. So um we need to keep keep our eyes uh forward thinking and and uh I appreciate that. So I didn't know Pat was gonna hop on and talk about that or not. So uh if he wants to, feel free, but I wanted to bring that to everyone's attention too.
Okay, thank you, Travis. Yeah, it's all good things. I mean, that's, you know, the yeah. Might as well use the facility and promote it and do everything we're trying to do. See. All right. Well, if there's nothing else, I thank all of you for coming on board tonight and just get us all up to speed. Sounds like a lot of exciting things going on out there and we're really looking forward to the spring opening here and see what we can do to help. Thank you all.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, council, we'll move on then. Everybody have a good evening. That was on. Uh we'll move on to our council reports. Uh we'll start over with uh Adam. Adam, you got a report tonight?
No report tonight. Thank you.
Uh Tracy, report tonight?
I don't have a report tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Uh Travis, report tonight?
Uh no formal report, just a reminder to everybody to get out and vote.
Jim, report tonight?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Jim. Um yeah, for my report, I don't have a lot, but I'll just I'll just say, uh, you know, I you know, big thank you to our staff at City Hall. They're they're really bringing in a lot of early voting, curbside voting, whatnot. Uh Bill will probably mention this in his report uh when he gets up as well. But we're going to be, I believe, Saturday is our voting day. I'll let Bill uh talk about that. But uh yeah, they're working hard. They're doing a lot of good stuff at City Hall with the votes and uh and and we thank you for voting early because with COVID and the limited uh number of people that can be in arena, you know, it is a presidential election. We expect a high voter turnout. Uh you know, the more early voting there is, the the better that day is going to go for the staff. So um so I think I think everybody at the end of day, even though they're working really hard right now, is going to appreciate the some of this early voting. So that's all I really have. Um. We'll move on. I believe Bill Mandy's not on tonight, is she?
No, Mayor, she is not.
Okay. Stephanie, did you have a report tonight?
I have no formal report here.
Okay. Uh Stephanie, just a comment. Uh you know, we were talking about a property that may be available for sale or for some acquisition for somebody. Uh that building could be looked at at any time if you contact me. So.
Okay, okay, I'll contact you. Sounds good. Thanks.
Yep. Um. City engineer Jim, report tonight?
Just a quick, short one. We did have a pre-construction conference this morning at nine o'clock at the Senior Citizen Center uh regarding our Third Street Northwest project. Um there may be a little bit of work yet this fall, early winter. Um the uh drilling company would like to come in in November to do some drilling, just to check uh depth of bedrock. And then uh the uh Bogalis uh and Sons of Hibbing are the utility subcontractor uh maybe in in November, December, doing some clearing and grubbing. And if the weather conditions permit, they may actually start some sanitary sewer construction, starting at the intersection of Seventh Avenue and Fourth Street. Um going west about a block within that fourth street, then they go south about a half a block to the alley and then west about another block. Uh they uh may try and get that done this winter, weather permitting. There will be no work done on Third Street itself. So that's all I have. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Jim. Council, any questions for Jim? Public Works Larry, report tonight?
Evening, everybody. I have some updates. Uh run through my list here. I like to just at least knock them off a little by little here as they finish up. So um the electric vehicle charging stations, we're still waiting on Minnesota Power for a final hookup. And then uh those ones in the known as the Tom and Jerry's parking lot there, um off First Street, between Lake and First Street, there will be um be available to public as soon as possible. Um it's uh when you see the map, the grid from these stations across the iron range, it's a perfect, that Chisholm's a perfect spot for this. So now we're really looking forward to that going live and starting to see some uh activity there. Um the Hibbing, um I I briefed the council last meeting about a potential new water customer for the city, Hibbing Taconite, and that um process continues to move forward aggressively. Um the timeline, if you remember from last meeting, was uh January one. It would be a goal. So so we're working towards that. We're doing what we can. We're working with Hibbing Tech closely on that. The garbage rollout was uh I overall a big success. I appreciate um all hands on deck from all my employees, all of the departments, the water sewer. Um uh garden, besides the garbage, you know, public works and the cemetery, everybody helped out. I appreciate um all your nice, kind words from the general public and your support. Um of course, you can't make everybody happy all the time, so we had a little uh pushback there, but all the nice compliments and stuff really help uh in those situations. Uh again, I would, besides the early voting and um um the um normal duties at City Hall, Denise and um Margaret and uh Christie have been helping with phone calls and relaying information to the public and that there. So you can't reach everybody on Facebook or in the utility billing or in the newspaper. So those people still require uh City Hall employees to help them out. So we appreciate that as well. Um. Uh questions uh as I go are always welcome, of course. Um I appreciate, again, two of the council's aggressive schedule and administrator Manny that we kept with the hiring process. Uh our first full time employee started on Monday. The second new one starts the following Monday uh this coming. So appreciate that. Uh the auction was a huge success. Again, Dubit out of Buell did an amazing job. They take video, tons of pictures, they answer questions, they uh forward phone calls. And that gives us the best pricing on the items for sale. So we really appreciate that. I'll give you a more of an in-depth uh financial report once we get um tallied up and all the checks are accepted, things like that. AT and T um Water Tower five G network is still on hold because of a contractor issue. Um you know, it's these, it's these contractors that have to go up on the tower and weld, and they have all these certifications and I I won't bore you with the details, but it's a, it's quite a process to go up on a water tower and weld the bracket on. So that is still on hold. Um but uh you know, the weather is getting worse and worse as we move forward. So uh the smoke testing was um al- always a success. I think we stated briefly in the last meeting. If I remember right, that, you know, we found over almost over four hundred deficiencies in our system, which is no real huge surprise. But we did not find that huge smoking gun that um that two point six, you know, two point three million, two million, that type of thing. We didn't find that yet. We're still looking. We're doing some further testing and uh more in-depth report when we get that. And that was the sewer smoke test, uh the sanitary sewer project. Um the two snowstorms that kind of hit us kind of dent, you know, should we plow, should we not, you know? We opted not to plow. The roads are not froze yet. You do amazing amount of damage to the roads when they're not froze. So we opted, we kind of lucked out. We did some extra sanding, stuff like that. So um some communities wiped off some dent and we opted not to and we kind of lucked out, I think. So and now if you see the extended forecast, all that snow is going to be gone. So we really, we really kind of lucked out there. Um campground uh was mentioned with the redhead bike trail uh information there. Uh appreciate all the help from them folks. I do talk to them folks pretty regularly as well. The campground's open year round. Um we opted to um, we have some travelers here from work. Uh we have um Travers for Pleasure. We have some hunters that come up and hunt um fish and things uh in the fall, you know, fall, early winter, besides the workers. So the campground is open year round. So we support them. We had some requests and we granted those requests and it's been working out great. And then I'll finish with um earlier this year in March, we had our number one pit pump fail um out at the uh out of our pump pump house that supplies the city with our fresh water. We have two pumps in total. And the first one, uh pump number one failed in March and we got through that. And we've been talking at length about a pump on the shelf and that type of thing. And but we've dialed in pretty, pretty well that now our number two pump failed. And sometimes timing is everything. And I'm looking on the bright side that we had a bunch of good training and stuff in March. So we're able to do some of the work ourselves this time and save the taxpayers a little money and and uh keep some of that work in-house. We've utilized some local contractors as well. We're going to start in that project at seven AM tomorrow and we hope to finish up by the time we go home on Friday. But number two pit pump is down. I know that's a lot of information, so on purpose.
Bill Dunler?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Larry, uh just a quick question. Um you might have mentioned it. You said a lot there. You're right. Yes, y- y- you know, a lot of, a lot of people probably got their P U C bill, looked at that map of the routes and everything for for pickup of garbage and never thought twice about it. Uh is that posted somewhere? I've already had a few people go, so when does my can get picked up? Well, I have no idea. I don't want nine hundred people calling you. You're busy. So have we put it on website or or
It is.
We have Shannon in every window of every business in town, or what are we going to do?
Yeah, yeah, you know, it's this uh, when they think of two thousand twenty, how do you reach people? And everybody's different, you know, Margaret helps us and Maria at the paper helps us. And uh it's on the city website. Mandy helped us there, put that on there. Um Keely at the chamber has it in her weekly blast. Um we have it on Facebook. We had it in the utility bills. Um how do you reach some people? You know, the senior center isn't open, the coffee, you know, the ladies aren't having coffee daily and things like that. It's it's a struggle, but we've tried and um we keep trying. It is on the city website, though, Mayor, and it is out there. Uh and you know, we're always going to get those phone calls and and uh, you know, those those folks just um, you know, request and require a phone conversation. So.
All right, thanks. All right, thank you, Larry. Just a, just a beside note on how this came up. It was actually from somebody that rents and utilities are included in their rent, so the landlord actually gets the utility bills and takes care. And, uh, so some of the mailers we do, don't get to their, to their actual residence, so.
Yeah, yeah, correct, yeah.
Person doesn't even think about that, that some of that goes on, so.
Yeah, those are really hard, those are really hard. And you know what, a lot we, we, we rely on too, as we say, when I talk to folks, and I know Margaret, you know, talks to a lot of folks, and we say, spread the word, you know, help your neighbor, tell your neighbor, tell the guy across the street when his, you see his can still sitting on the boulevard, you know, tell him he can put it in the alley, things like that. So, uh, that, that goes a long way, too. We get calls that say, well, you know, so-and-so across the street wasn't able to move her can, you know, so I did it for her, and I put it in the alley, and it's going to be there for you guys. And so that helps, too.
Mr. Mayor? Calls in new garbage trucks working?
Great, we got them all dialed in now. Yeah, um, you, you think, I think we talked about a little bit last meeting, you think you're going to get these trucks, and they're just off the lot, and they're ready to go to work, but they're work trucks, they're really not. They, they go to multiple different vendors to get built up, but they're working really well now. As of last night, the mechanic was here till 5:30 last night, uh, the McQueen mechanic, that's the dealer there. So we got them all dialed in, Tracy, thank you.
Okay, good. And then one more question about the campground. What are we doing with water? I mean, is the water shut off up there for the winter months for these people, or what do they do then?
Yeah, we got the water shut off, and, uh, we've been fortunate, everybody that has reserved a spot actually calls the campground phone and says, are you, are you really open? Yeah, yeah, we're open. And we get them close to the building as possible, and then we have, uh, 400 feet of garden hose that these folks, these new trailers, especially these ice castles, um, you know, or ice houses there, whatever, there's lots of different models, but they, um, they're able to fill up their tanks, they have heated tanks, you know, and, and so they can still use their bathrooms, because the ground isn't froze yet, so the sewer's fine. So the, the, the short answer to your question is, we have a garden hose that allow these folks to fill up their trailers yet, um, you know, daily or weekly, whatever their needs are. So we, we do supply water still.
Thank you. Counsel, anything? Larry?
Claire. Hey. Hey, uh, quick question for you. I had a, someone reach out to me that lives in the alley of the commercial pickup. Do they, do they have an option to do Monday or Thursday?
No, so.
No, get down, get down.
Um, if they're on the, they're not on the, the, the Monday, Thursday is just commercial. If they're residential, it's either Tuesday or Wednesday.
Oh, okay, all right.
Yeah, so if they're on the, you know, the, I'm so mixed up on this right now. I talk to so many people every day, and I click on it to open it, but, um, yeah, so if they're on the south side, they're on the south side residential, they're on the north side, uh, north side residential. The, the commercial is just the commercial customers.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else, Larry?
Mr. Mayor, I have a comment for Larry.
Go ahead, Jim.
Hey, Larry, how's it going tonight?
Good, Counsel Varda, how do you like my background?
I just want to say I love it, man, I can't wait for it.
I know, you too. All right.
That's it, okay, we'll move on then. Fire Chief Chris, you got a report tonight?
Yeah, just a quick couple of things. Good evening, Mayor, Council Administrator, City Attorney. Um, we got, we have four applicants for our open lieutenant's position. We will be interviewing for that position Monday night, and then hopefully by the next council meeting have our recommendation for you to approve. Um, and one other thing, uh, Hibbing Fire reached out to us a couple of weeks ago and asked us if we wanted some supply line, new supply line for our engines. So we got 16 50-foot sections of, it's used, but it's still okay to use. We'll, we'll retest it, but, so we saved some money there for new supply line for our engine one. Um, that is all I have for tonight. Any questions?
Thank you, Chris. Counsel, questions?
Chris, Counsel Varki here. I just, uh, how's it going?
It's going, it's going well.
Yeah?
Yes.
Okay, do you need anything from us or anything?
Uh, not at this time. No, we're just trying to, you know, move along and get, get things rolling here. Hopefully you get some applicants that will apply for firefighter positions here coming up, and we can start filling those positions also.
All right, just wanted to check in.
Yep, thank you.
Chris, Mayor Champa, just, uh, wanted to get you up to speed. You may or may not know, but the council is going to take up the emergency manager position. We're going to do the, uh, uh, ask for applicants on that. Uh, we were hoping to do it at this meeting, but we're going to be trying to, Bill's working, he'll probably be in contact with you as well to try to put together this job description and stuff for the council. It just, he had too many things going on to do it, but we're going to try to bring it back for next meeting, so. Um, so any help you can give him with that would be appreciated.
Yeah, no problem. We've, I've actually been asked by a couple firefighters about that, and, uh, I told them, when I hear something, I'll let them know, so.
But the, uh, the council felt that, uh, y- you know, we would open it up to, to city staff as well, so, uh, not just firefighters, so. Um, so we'll be revisiting that at, uh, hopefully at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Library, Katie, are you on tonight?
I didn't see her, Mayor.
Okay. We'll move on. Uh, Bill, did, uh, the police chief make it on tonight?
No, Mayor, he is not on.
Okay. Uh, Chief of Police is out ill tonight, so I didn't expect him to be on. We'll, we'll take his items as they come up. Our Rec Director Tammy, are you on tonight?
I am, just a short report, uh, just reminding the public that applications for the Skane Rink attendance are due this Friday by 4:00 PM. Um, one thing about this job, if you have another job, we're flexible, um, even if you just get a few hours in a week, so it's, um, just putting it out there.
Thank you. Counsel, anything for Tammy? City Attorney, report tonight at all?
Thank you, Mayor, I can, uh, report back on just a couple of items, uh, that I want to get ahead of. Uh, the, the nuisance parking ordinance, I apologize, I wasn't able to get it back for this council meeting. Uh, I do have that in progress, it's nearly finished. I expect I'll have it back for the next meeting. Uh, I have been attempting to coordinate a call with Mr. Sepul from Ironbound Studios to get an update, a full update to the council about the status of that space downstairs. Uh, and then for, uh, Mr. Johnson, I did receive some emails this morning, and those easements, both temporary and permanent, that you requested are in progress at this point. And so I'd have, other than that, I'd be happy to field questions from the council.
Counsel, anything for Brian? Thanks, Brian. Bill, report tonight. Uh, just one thing I forgot to mention, uh, Bill can mention it for me. Uh, obviously, we need to thank our representative and senator, but I'll let Bill do that as long as it's his, it's his, it's his spotlight.
Well, that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wouldn't call it my spotlight, it's a total team effort, but, um, what the mayor is referring to is the fact that we received the, the $1.91 million, which was on the front page of the paper today in state bonding, and Senator Thomasoni, Representative Sandstad, um, the Chair of the House Committee, Mary Murphy of Duluth, the bonding committees, both the House and the Senate, uh, that came through the area, everybody that, uh, recognized the importance of health and safety to our community. Uh, a big thanks, uh, goes out to all of them, um, because my understanding is only one-third of the projects that asked for funding actually got funded, so, uh, we should feel very fortunate, uh, that, uh, our local politicians, um, uh, included us in the bonding bill that was signed by the governor. So a big thank you to, uh, to all of them, and to everybody here that was part of, when the bonding tours, uh, came through, um, everybody's input was important, so, so thank you for that. Uh, the mayor touched a little bit about the election, um, and, uh, the people here at City Hall, um, deserve an awful lot of credit. The weather's hasn't been the greatest, and there's been an awful lot of curbside voting that has taken place this week. Uh, the mayor mentioned Saturday, we are required to be, um, available and open for voting from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM this Saturday, also, uh, till 5:00 PM on Monday. So, uh, an awful lot of, of people coming up and, uh, voting from their cars, so, um, so, so that's a good thing. Um, the point of information, uh, at the last meeting, recall, um, the chamber brought forward a Lake Street Trick or Treat COVID plan, and part of that COVID plan talked about, and had mentioned on there that the event would be canceled if, uh, school went to distance learning. And so the fact that the elementary school and one class at the Vaughn have moved to distance learning, um, through November 2nd, that Lake Street Trick or Treat event has been canceled by the chamber per their COVID plan. Um, it was touched on earlier, the Emergency Management Coordinator, in a, in addition to, uh, working, uh, reaching out to, uh, Fire Chief, uh, Chris, um, also be in contact with Dewey Johnson, who manages, he's a St. Louis County Emergency Management Director, to get, um, information for job description, what the minimum qualification should be. Uh, these are the items that, um, the reason why it's not on the agenda tonight is we didn't have a job description, um, we didn't have the, um, you know, what the minimum qualification should be, and the fact that we're going to post it internally to all city employees, we need to make sure that we have all that in order. So in addition to reaching out to our, our Fire Chief, also be reaching out to, uh, Mr. Johnson with St. Louis County, and we will bring that information back to the next meeting for, uh, council approval on the job description and, and the internal posting that'll go along with that. Uh, with that, um, I will entertain any questions.
Thank you, Bill. We'll move on. All right, next item, consent agenda, these are your list of bills that showed up, uh, just before the meeting tonight from Eileen, thank you for that, Eileen. Communication, which are the Airport Authority Minutes, Housing Redevelopment Authority Minutes, Public Utility Commission Minutes, Third Quarter 2020, Chisholm Ambulance Report, Minutes of the previous City Council Meeting, the, uh, October 14, 2020, regular meeting, a payroll in overtime. Can I get a motion to accept consent agenda?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor. Counsel Lance?
Counsel Lance, second for that?
Support.
Supported by Counsel Varda. Uh, discussion, corrections, questions? Margaret?
Counsel Lance?
Aye.
Counsel Fulton, absent. Counsel Varki?
Aye.
Counsel Varda?
Aye.
Counsel Campbell?
Aye.
Mayor Champa?
Aye. Consent agenda is approved, unfinished business, CARES Act funding bill.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, uh, I'd like to refer you to page 22 of the council packet, please. In my memo, I had this listed as an action item. Um, I had expected to receive some information, uh, the first part of this week regarding, um, the expenditure on the remaining CARES Act funds, uh, which have to be, um, allocated by November 15th. So I'd like to, uh, change, rather than an action item, I want to change this to informational. Um, in the first paragraph, I mentioned that there's about $35,600 in CARES Act funds that haven't been allocated. Um, that number is, is, is a good number. Um, but if you recall, there was about $68,300 that was approved for, um, safety-related measures here at City Hall and at the library, in, in, in the two offices, um, here at City Hall, um, and, and the library, and those are the numbers I was waiting for on Monday. Um, there's another set of numbers, uh, the library numbers came in, um, higher than expected, and so working with the architect, um, enroll numbers, probably about $20,000 more when you add everything up than the $68,300. Um, and then in reaching out to the consultants, um, I asked them, what else are they aware that's out there that we could fund, or what they felt would be a good use of the funds? And I put that, uh, as the last paragraph in my memo, that the local food shelf, um, there's qualifying COVID-19 related food costs from March through September in the amount of $19,874. Uh, they have the documentation for that, and they don't, don't just come up with a number, uh, $19,874 if you don't have the documentation. And so, um, it's a feeling that that would, um, be, uh, potential, another good use of the spending of our money on reimbursing the local food shelf that has serviced people in need, um, of food due to the COVID situation. So what my revised plan is, is, um, I will be back at the next meeting to finalize. Uh, what I envision happening is I'll have, um, um, the final numbers on City Hall and the library, and then the, the, the recommendation, um, will be to whatsoever left, we might be a little bit short, um, if we elect to do, uh, the, the whole library project of the $19,874 for the food shelf. That's why I anticipate bringing back at the November 10th meeting. With that, I'll entertain any questions.
Counsel, anything for Bill? Bill, just a comment, I, I love the idea of helping out the food shelf, but obviously, uh... All right, we'll move on, thank you, Bill. Uh, Stephanie, new business resolution, 1020-84, accept or apply and accept CCF grant for Economic Development Authority. Good evening.
Good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Um, at our last council meeting, Counsel Varki had brought up that the Chisholm Community Foundation, um, may have some funds available for Chisholm EDA to offer some grant opportunities for businesses within the Chisholm area. So I went ahead and wrote the grant, which is attached in the packet here, for the cost of $30,000. Um, what will happen with those funds is they will go to the, if we're granted the funds, they will go to the Chisholm EDA, um, board, and we will formulate a plan of COVID relief grant dollars to be distributed within this, within the businesses in Chisholm.
Counsel, I'd be looking for a motion to adopt Resolution 1020-84 to apply and accept, uh, the CCF grant for $30,000.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Counsel Varki is our second for that?
I'll second that.
Second by Counsel Campbell, further discussion?
Uh, yeah, I got a question. Is there certain funds or certain, you know, is it's the same scenario that we can use, or is this something that we can use for some of the nonprofits that, uh, aren't able for COVID relief?
Yeah, this, these funds are not, they're not CARES Act funds, so they aren't going to be tied to the, to the stringent regulations that with, um, with not being allowed in a nonprofit, so they would be, they would be allowed to be used.
Stephanie, how, I, I don't know that you know this answer yet, but how are they, um, because I have the same question Adam has, actually, because the, uh, there are some nonprofits that we kind of left behind last time. Uh, how are, how do you feel that the application process is going to go? Is this something that's going to be, I mean, on Chisholm's website or EDA website, or?
Sure, for as far as promotion of the?
Yeah, I mean, how are we gonna, how, how are they going to apply for these funds? Do we?
So I'm hoping with partnership with the board, we'll come up with somewhere between 15 and 25, um, available grants, depending on the, on the cost, on the amount that we approve. Um, but I think the best approach is try to, try to get them out to every avenue we can. I'd put them on the, our, the website here, our Facebook pages, um, they could go through the Chamber Blast. But if there's any other recommendation for, for distributing that information, I'd be willing to take that into consideration, too.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to hear it so that anybody listening would know where they might be able to find it.
Sure.
Thank you. Uh, okay, so do we do have a motion in support to, uh, apply and accept? Uh, there's no further discussion? Margaret?
Counsel Lance?
Aye.
Counsel Fulton, absent. Counsel Varki?
Aye.
Counsel Varda?
Aye.
Counsel. Council Campbell.
Hi.
And Mayor Champa.
Hi, good, our motion passes, thank you, Stephanie. Vern's items tonight. I'll take these since Bill's got a bunch coming up. So resolution 1020-85, apply for an accept CCF grant for foreign toxin meters for police department. Council Vern talked a little bit about this during the budget meeting that he had this in the work, so. Nice that they're gonna help us out with that. So adopt a resolution, motion to adopt resolution 1020-85.
I'll make that motion to adopt resolution 1020-85.
Support. Temple seconded by Council Lance, further discussion. Margaret.
Council Lance.
Hi.
Council Fulton, absent, Council Vaki.
Hi.
Council Varda.
Hi.
Council Campbell.
Hi.
Mayor Champa.
Hi, good, our motion carries. Our next item under Vern, St. Joseph's Catholic Church gambling application to hold a raffle, January 29, 2021. I'd entertain a motion to approve that gambling permit.
Make that motion.
Support. Lance, supported by Council Vaki, I believe.
No, Varda.
Varda, okay. Further discussion on that item? Margaret.
Council Lance.
Hi.
Council Fulton, absent, Council Vaki.
Hi.
Council Varda.
Hi.
Council Campbell.
Hi.
Mayor Champa.
Hi, good, our motion carries. Next item under Vern, First Amendment to Law Enforcement Services Agreement with Buell. You may or may not remember just probably a couple of months ago, Chief Manner felt that financially, the numbers worked out pretty well with Buell from last, or for this year. He recommended a 3% increase. You see, you have a letter from Buell that they had approved a 3% increase and would like to continue with our, with that relationship. And I would recommend we approve this continuation of this agreement with that 3% increase.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor, for that 3% increase with the city of Buell for 2021.
Okay, second for that.
Support.
Further discussion? Margaret.
Sorry about that, Council Lance.
Hi.
Council Fulton, absent, Council Vaki.
Hi.
Council Varda.
Hi.
Council Campbell.
Hi.
Mayor Champa.
Hi, good, our motion passes. Agreement to process traffic and parking tickets. As I'm sure you're aware, as part of that agreement, we also do parking or traffic and parking tickets for the city of Buell. We keep all revenues associated with those tickets and the, basically it, this is a self-renewing contract, but we'd be looking just for a motion to continue with this agreement with the same terms, but continue it into 2021. So I'll entertain that motion.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Council Varda, second for that. Council Vaki. Further discussion? Margaret.
Council Lance.
Hi.
Council Fulton, absent, Council Vaki.
Hi.
Council Varda.
Hi.
Council Campbell.
Hi.
Mayor Champa.
Hi. Motion passes. All right, Jim Johnson, approve in execution of Iron Range Resources grant contract agreement for Third Street Northwest, Northwest Infrastructure Improvement Project. Good evening, Jim.
Good evening, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Back in July, the council adopted a resolution that authorized the city administrator to make application to IRRB for, under their community infrastructure grant program for our Third Street Northwest project. At their October 6 meeting, the Iron Range and Resource IRRB Board approved a grant of $250,000 to the city of Chisholm, which is attached right behind that. And it's pretty much a standard agreement and what we're asking for is for the council's approval to allow the mayor and that I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Council, if there's no questions, I'll be looking for a motion alone myself and the administrator sign that contract and enter into that contract with Iron Range Resources for the $250,000.
I'll make that motion for that grant for $250,000.
Thank you, Tracy made the motion. Travis, did you have a question?
Yeah, I'll second it and then I'll ask my question.
Okay, good.
Jim, I was just curious, I know last meeting you weren't sure why it was only 250,000 that we got. Did you ever find out that answer?
I have not had a response yet from that, but I will continue to pursue it because last year when Bill and I had met with Chris Ismill, our local rep, it seemed to be based on a one-sixth of the cost would be what they were matching with or putting up as a one-sixth match and which would have brought our grant up to about $325,000, but I've inquired but have not received a response yet, but I will do so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Once again, thank you, I that to Iron Range Resources, every penny helps to get these projects moving forward. There's nothing else, Margaret?
Council Lance.
Hi.
Council Fulton, absent, Council Vaki.
Hi.
Council Varda.
Hi.
Council Campbell.
Hi.
Mayor Champa.
Hi, good, our motion passes. Thank you, Jim. Bill, resolution 1020, excuse me, 1020-86, application to the United States Economic Development Administration CARES Act Program and provide matching funds.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this isn't the first time that you've seen this back in June or July was the first time that this came before the council. And there's a revision and on the grant, so on page 65 of your packet. In my memo, I mentioned that the original grant application was submitted or was, was to be submitted for one and a half million dollars and just to refresh everybody's memory, this has to do with the citywide wifi mesh network, there were some things incorporated for the campground. Some downtown development items and that the city had, this grant was a one to five match, so, so the original, when this came before the council before million and a half bucks, 20% of that or one-fifth of that was 300,000. So the grant has been revised down to 704,200. The reasons for that, I spelled my memo, one is the wifi engineering study was not completed. And now that that's been completed, the EDA consultants had figured that the cost of the project to be a little higher for the wifi mesh network. Secondly, the updates for the campground were included in the original grant. And per the Federal Economic Development Administration, if the campground was included, there would need to be environmental impact statements with, which take time. And this was a time-sensitive grant, it's a first come, first served. And it was mentioned to the EDA consultants who were writing the grant that there were too many items in the grant and they narrowed it down to the 704,200. So in essence, what the grant will do is create a statewide wifi backbone and some technical assistance support to the Chisholm EDA with local businesses accessing funding. If the city, if we do receive this, then our match goes down on the one to four or one to five, excuse me, to 140,840. And any of the work under the grant would be bid out if, if the city happens to get awarded this grant. Then the work under the grant, there'd be the specifications and this would all be public bid items. So with that, I would recommend approval of resolution 1020-86 in the application to the United States Economic Development Administration CARES Act Program and to provide the necessary matching funds on a one to five match.
Also, would you like to make a motion to adopt resolution 1020-86?
I'll make the motion to adopt 1020-86.
Your second for that?
Second.
Support.
Okay, motion made by Counselor Lance, seconded by Council Vaki, just a comment on my side. Really a neat concept here of being able to provide a wireless internet here for our business district and people visiting the community. So I think this is, would, this really would, this be different and kind of fun for Chisholm, so. And it also has some some ability to generate funds to keep the thing running, so through, through membership on it, so. Really a neat thing, so I'm glad somebody brought it forward, so. Council, anything else on that?
Just have a comment, Mr. Mayor, if we, if we are fortunate to get the funds, you know, we'll, we'll work to bring forward all the particulars so the council fully understands all the inner workings of the grant before the decisions made to accept the grant. Of course, we have to fully understand everything involved with that, so just a comment.
Thank you. If there's nothing else, so Margaret.
Council Lance.
Hi.
Council Fulton, absent, Council Vaki.
Hi.
Council Varda.
Hi.
Council Campbell.
Hi.
Mayor Champa.
Hi. Good, our motion passes. Bill, 2021 Fire Protection Services Contract for Unorganized Township 59-21.
To Mayor members of the council, this is an annual contract that goes to St. Louis County. This is the one that we had talked about earlier in the year about a rate increase that was approved. Previously, under the contract, I believe it was like three or four years that the rate didn't change. We received 15,459. We put some cost of living increases in the contract, submitted, submitted the requested increase to 16,108, which is about a 4.2% increase. That recommended increase was approved by the St. Louis County Board. So I would recommend approval of the Fire Protection Services Agreement for 2021 for Unorganized Township 59-21.
Council, entertain.
Motion.
Motion by Council Varda, I believe, second for that.
I'll second that.
Council Campbell. Further discussion? Okay, Margaret.
Council Lance.
Hi.
Council Fulton, absent, Council Vaki.
Hi.
Council Varda.
Hi.
Council Campbell.
Hi.
Mayor Champa.
Hi, good, our motion passes. Our next item is more of a housekeeping. Administrator Manny felt that Attorney Lindsey should be part of the negotiating team with the LEL Labor Agreement for nothing more than, obviously, he puts together the contracts, so. Council, I'd entertain a motion at the administrator's recommendation to add Attorney Lindsey to that committee.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor, Council Campbell.
Okay, second for that?
Support.
Motion made by Council Campbell, seconded by Council Lance, further discussion, council? Margaret.
Council Lance.
Hi.
Council Fulton, absent, Council Vaki.
Hi.
Council Varda.
Hi.
Council Campbell.
Hi.
Mayor Champa.
Hi. Motion passes. Addendum to City Master COVID-19 Plan for Critical Employees, Bill, I'll let you have this one.
Sure, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Attorney Lindsey, I'm gonna need your help with something I want to talk about here in a second. But with COVID and ever-changing guidelines, things change. And so I just direct your attention to page 84 of the packet, which is a one-page document from the CDC, the Center for Disease Control regarding critical infrastructure employees. And so what is in front of you, this addendum to the COVID plan, so we have our city master plan. We also have our exhibits that certain entities have brought forth to me that I passed on to Attorney Lindsey and he's usually marked those up and we sent them back and we brought those to the council for approval. So what this would be, would be just like an addendum to a contract, so we have our city master plan. This would be an addendum to our master plan. And what it has to do with is some revised regulations due to Center for Disease Control recommendations for critical employees. Now, or I asked for Attorney Lindsey and, and I apologize for not bringing this up earlier, it's been, been a challenging week. But if you, if you look at page 74, on the, the, the heading on this says City of Chisholm COVID-19 Preparedness Plan. And it says for public works, cemetery, parks, slash buildings, water, sewer, refuse and campground employees. Attorney Lindsey, I need your guidance is can I recommend that? I know this isn't a packet, but what my recommendation is, is that the heading on this plan that we changed to say, rather than everything I just listed, change to say city critical employees because we have a police department, we have firefighters, we have other city critical employees that is not spelled on here. So is that something that I could recommend we change now or do I need to bring it back at the next meeting?
No. Absolutely, Administrator Manny, you can make that recommendation. And then what we could do is the motion to, if there's a motion to adopt this, this amendment, it would just be a contingent motion that the adoption is contingent upon changing the heading to match the critical worker designation.
Thank you. So, Mr. Mayor, I would like to move this forward with the change that I mentioned in changing the addendum heading from what it says, where it says for public works, cemetery, parks, buildings, water, sewer, refuge and campground employees. That would come out and it would be City of Chisholm COVID-19 Preparedness Plan for city critical employees.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Should be looking at a motion to approve the addendum to the master plan with that additional change.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Council Lance, is there a second for that?
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor, it's Council Campbell.
Okay, Council Campbell, seconded that, further discussion? Okay, Margaret.
Council Lance.
Hi.
Council Fulton, absent, Council Vaki.
Hi.
Council Varda.
Hi.
Council Campbell.
Hi.
Mayor Champa.
Hi, our motion carries, thank you, Bill. Resolution 1020-87, reappointed on Nova South, Central Iron Range Sanitary District. As you may recall from the last meeting, we did open this position up for anybody else that may want to apply along with a couple other openings we had. And Mr. Nova South was the only one that put in application, so I would make the recommendation that we reappoint her on Nova South to Central Iron Range Sanitary District Board.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion by Council Vaki, second for that?
Second.
Council Campbell, further discussion? Margaret.
Council Lance.
Hi.
Council Fulton, absent, Council Vaki.
Hi.
Council Varda.
Hi.
Council Campbell.
Hi.
Mayor Champa. Mayor Champa.
Hi. Good, a motion carries. Next item, job description for city clerk treasurer administrator. This came out of our working session discussion. I hopefully, I correctly assumed that this is, is a real job description based on what we had discussed, and made some changes with the wage thing and some of the other things. Would that be correct, Bill? These, these have, this has the changes in there, right?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay. So Counsel, this would be our first step in, in trying to get a new administrator would be approve this job description. So I think this is what the council had asked for. So I would entertain a motion to approve the job description first.
I'll make that motion to approve the job description for the city clerk treasurer administrator.
Okay. Motion by Counselor Campbell, is there a second for that?
Support.
Counselor Vaki. Discussion. Margaret?
Counselor Lance.
Hi.
Counselor Fulton, absent. Counselor Vaki.
Hi.
Counselor Varda.
Hi.
Counselor Campbell.
Hi.
Mayor Champa.
Hi. Good, a motion carries. Point Committee for Hiring, City Clerk, Treasurer Administrator. My opinion, Bill, to council people, I think Margaret would be a good person to sit on that board as well. Obviously, our city attorney, since he may, we may have to use him to, to redraft the agreement. Obviously, I would like to serve on that board. I work with the administrator nearly on a daily basis or check in nearly on a daily basis. I, I think it's pretty important. I know both Adam and April expressed their desire to serve on that board. I don't have a preference, but I do know April just served on the last hiring committee. So I don't know when Adam's been on one last. So Counsel, entertain, that'd be my move. Bill, anybody else that should be on there, do you think?
Uh, no, Mayor.
Or something?
What's that?
You, what, who do you feel in your position would be good to, you know, be on that committee? Your thoughts? I guess I never ask you till now.
Yeah, I mean, if, if, if there's a department head that you'd want to add as representative from there, or even, you know, Eileen, the deputy clerk, she has to work hand in hand with the administrator. That might, so I would think, one of the department heads, Mayor, should, should probably be on there.
Bill, do we occasionally have this thing written? And anybody else we deem, Phil, is necessary to? Have we done, did we term things like that in the past?
I think, Mayor, what you're going off of is the city hiring policy that I believe the language in there states something to the effect that the committee gets appointed by the council. And I believe it says something about, or any other employee that the administrator deems necessary or appropriate to serve on the committee. And we did do that with the, the hire, the, the two public works employees. Though he wasn't part of the committee, we did bring in Larry Pervananzi for the interviews for his expertise and the fact that he was a long-term employee with all his experience, we thought would be valuable. So we followed the, the hiring policy does state exactly what you're saying.
Okay. Counsel, entertain a motion, although I myself, Administrator Manny, Confidential Secretary Gornick, Attorney Lindsey. Like you said, I, I feel counsel person Lance should serve on that, just because I don't know when he's been on a hiring committee, if he would take that position. And as the hiring policy dictates, you know, if there's somebody else we feel at the last minute should be on there, that we, we include them in the process.
No, I, I was on the committee just before April's last one. So I, I would think that this would be my turn. And I said, I wasn't going to fight over it, but I do want to be on this committee.
Counsel, you make a motion to point that committee? With Counselor Lance?
I'll make that motion with Counselor Lance, as the council rep, yourself, Margaret, Attorney Lindsey, Administrator Manny. And did you say a department head? Did you say Eileen?
Well, we just, Bill thought maybe Eileen as well. You know, I was kind of leaning on the hiring policy that if there's somebody that we feel at the last minute or whatever should be there, we'll, we'll include them.
Okay, so we'll leave that out then. So I made a motion for everybody you said, and Dean will bring in anybody deemed necessary if needed.
Okay, is there a second for that?
Second for discussing.
Go ahead, Travis.
Are you against having April on too?
Three is not quorum. I said, would you be against having April on? Because three is not a quorum.
Brian, could you chime in on that? I don't, you know, I just, I've never served on a little committee like this with three council people. So I, I don't know that answer.
So long as we avoid a quorum mayor, then we would be all right as, as far as the open meeting law is concerned.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Counselor.
I'll, I'll, I'll take my motion back to add a Counselor Fulton on to that. So we'll have Counselor Lance, Counselor Fulton, Margaret, the mayor, our lawyer, and Bill.
Thank you, Tracy. Counselor Vaki, amend your motion to add April?
Yes, I'll amend my second.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I just have a comment.
Yes, Jim?
Um, I would just like to tell everybody on the committee, I had to fight really hard against two other counselors to get Bill hired as deputy clerk. So make sure you do a good job and fight for who you want.
Jimmy did a good job because he's a good man. Margaret?
Counselor Lance.
Hi.
Counselor Fulton, absent. Counselor Vaki.
Hi.
Counselor Varda.
Hi.
Counselor Campbell.
Hi.
Mayor Champa.
Hi. Good, a motion carries. Advertise for city clerk treasurer administrator position. I think I would like to start, we, we had some discussions about this and myself, I would like to throw this out there for about a month. Advertise in all the locations we normally do. I don't know if Bill or Margaret have some additional things they may have in their mind of where we might, because this is all different than a normal job position. Bill, thoughts on that, other, other places we might advertise because it's an administrator? Like you said, I'd like to, I'd like to give it our, our best first shot for about a month. And if it doesn't work out, then we're going to have to decide to maybe do some other things like we had discussed in the working session and maybe try to find some people to help us. But this first push, I'd like to hit all the key spots.
Mr. Mayor, and you know, Margaret has been instrumental in this. And I think when we advertised for Stephanie's position, we pretty much covered the whole state. I mean, we hit the Iron Range Papers. We hit, along with that, you, you get the, the internet presence, the Duluth Market, the Twin Cities Market. We, we worked through North Forest and the people that they reach out to. We were, the website, Facebook. Margaret, what am I missing? We, we hit just about everything that we're aware of. Job, the job service located over in Hibbing. And they, they have a network where items get posted. Feel like I'm missing one or two, Margaret.
The League of Minnesota Cities is a big one. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Counselor Campbell.
I was going to say, the League of Minnesota Cities, the MCMA, which is the Minnesota City Council Management Association, and the ICMA, which is the International City County Management Association. Those are all recommended in the toolkit for hiring of a city administrator put up by the League of Minnesota Cities. I think those would be good areas to go to also.
So that would be my recommendation. Let's hit all those places to post this position. My feeling would be we should give it a month and we'll see how it goes. So I'd be looking for a motion to do that.
I'll make that motion with all those recommendations that we just talked about. There's so many that we listed. Margaret, do you have them written down?
Do.
I might, I'll make that motion.
Okay. Second for Counselor Campbell's motion.
Support.
Counselor Lance. Further discussion? Margaret?
Counselor Lance.
Hi.
Counselor Fulton, absent. Counselor Vaki.
Hi.
Counselor Varda.
Hi.
Counselor Campbell.
Hi.
Mayor Champa.
Hi. Good, a motion carries. Schedule working session for twenty twenty-one budget. There's a recommended date on there and it has a lot to do with the next item, which is where we're going to, you know, if you kind of look at page ninety-four and ninety-five, kind of has one for a minute, you'll see why we're going to have to look at changing our council meetings in November. There's also some public utility stuff going on in November. Earlier in the day of the twelfth, the PUC is actually, actually has a budget session to try to put in some preliminary numbers. And I think Bill feels he'll have them at that point for our meeting that night. So I don't know how that conflicts with anybody's schedule, but November's getting pretty tight with some things. So hopefully, we could do that and get a working session, our next budget working session, Thursday, November twelfth at six P.M. That'd be the recommendation, but I'll open it up for discussion.
That works for me.
Make the motion.
Make that motion.
Second, second for discussion.
Hey, go ahead, Jim.
Bill, do you think that's enough time to do all this budget work? If we do it November twelfth?
I, I think Counselor Varda, November twelfth is a good day for a couple of reasons. The, the mayor did mention that earlier that day, the PUC will be having a working session on their budget. The PUC's next regularly scheduled meeting is the next Wednesday, the eighteenth, I believe it is. And if there's going to be any rate increases, those rate increases would be approved. The goal would be to have the PUC approve those on the eighteenth, come back to the council on the twenty-fourth, which would give us the thirty-day required notice to give our rate payers. So any rate increases that will go into effect for the enterprise, funds, the water, sewer, garbage would be effect, effective the first of the year. That's one of the reasons. Another reason is, is that I feel that the last meeting was, was, was a good meeting. We went through all the departments, but there wasn't any conversation regarding any infrastructure projects. I know there's been a interest expressed in looking at possibly some mill and overlay projects. And so I think that would be a good time, not only for the PUC items, but also we need to have a, more of a conversation about other infrastructure projects, if any. And then it, it all gears up to the, you know, ideally, we need to be prepared, in my opinion, for the November twenty-fourth meeting to, though not make the final budgets, we at least have to have the budgets as we're going to present them during the truth and taxation on December ninth. And then by the end of the year, we, we have to set the final levy. So we need to get through, in my opinion, next week is, is the election week, which is, which is going to be a challenge. We have Veterans Day in there on the eleventh. And another thing is, is that, though I don't think this is the case, we may need to, on that day, have it, we, we may need to have a short special meeting to canvas the votes. It depends on, because of Veterans Day being on the eleventh, the votes, the ballots that are received by us that are postmarked by November third go through the tenth. Now, the county has mentioned that, that their results may not be available till after the tenth. That doesn't mean that our results can't be available by the close of business on the tenth. My goal right now is to canvas those votes at the meeting of the tenth from the election. But it is possible that these election, things are changing by the day, too, that we may need a ten or fifteen-minute meeting, special meeting to canvas those votes. If so, we could have that meeting right prior to this one. So I know it's a long answer, but basically, it's yes. I feel that's a, a good date and, and I'm going to do everything I can to have everything in order, working with Eileen, the department heads and staff, to have everything in, in ready for the next meeting on the twelfth.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, so we have motion support to schedule our working session. I didn't even realize as I'm reading this thing that, that's right, we did already change the council meetings for November. But if there's no other discussion on that, we'll take a vote on that, having that working session.
Counselor Lance.
Hi.
Counselor Fulton, absent. Counselor Vaki.
Hi.
Counselor Varda.
Hi.
Counselor Campbell.
Hi.
Mayor Champa.
Hi. Good, a motion carries to hold that working, or that budget session on the twelfth. Next item is just informational that our win, our second and fourth Wednesday meetings will be on the Tuesdays of the tenth and the twenty-fourth. So that'll be our regular meeting nights. Miscellaneous, let me just chat briefly about some things that Bill is working on that's going to be coming down the pipe. As you're all aware, we did, were awarded one point nine-two million dollars towards our public safety building in the bonding bill. Bill has already reached out to a financial planner that the city has used in the past. It used to be called Springstead. They have a new name now. But he's asking him for a number of different proposals on things that are related to finances that we want to look at. And he's going to bring them back in proposals with, with prices on having them do some work for us. One of them is how we're going to pay for the rest of that public building, public safety building, based on that one point nine-two million dollars. That's one of the proposals. Another one, I believe Counselor Campbell brought it up last time, the PUC's also discussing it. He's going to ask for a proposal to have them do a rate study for us. They're also looking at trying to put together proposal on trying to figure out what type of rate Hibbing tax might pay for water for this, as a new customer, along with some other things associated with that. So he's looking at a couple of getting a few different proposals from them to bring back to the council at some type of point here to view. One other item is with that one point nine-two million dollars, we're also, obviously, we're, we're working with five vehicles to try to get that thing to final bid documents. And he's reached out to Robert Kurznowski to try to set up a quick meeting to try to figure out where we go now, how we finish, how we finish this deal and get this thing ready. And as soon as we know something, we'll get the council back involved. Bill, anything else on any of those that I missed?
No, I think you touched them all, Mayor.
As well as the emergency manager we're going to bring back. Counsel, anything else we, you'd like to try to get on another agenda here while we got everybody on the line?
Not, not, nothing to add to agenda, but I do have a comment.
Go ahead, Jim. Margaret? How are you tonight? How are you tonight?
Good, thanks. Thanks. And you?
Good. I just want to compliment you on your ghost and witch's hat. Look very nice.
All right, if there's nothing else, we will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting tonight.
I'll make that motion to adjourn.
Councilor Campbell, second.
Support.
Councilor Lance. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This meeting is adjourned. Everybody have a good evening and have a happy Halloween.